Your TV is waiting for us. Audience out there, webcast audience and your TV, we have a new configuration and a new system that we are trying out tonight, and it sounds good, and I think we're going to be okay. So we'll stand for a moment of personal reflection. I'll ask councillor Gardner to lead us in a singing of the National Anthem, please.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land, true patriot love in all of us command. Car ton bras s'est porté les pays, il s'est porté la croix. Ton histoire est une époque des plus brillants exploits. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you councillor Gardner, that was beautiful. We acknowledge that we are gathering on the traditional territory of the Mohawk people of Aqusasne. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mayor Bernadette Clement, present. Councillors Claude McIntosh.
Present.
Elaine McDonald.
Present.
Sid Gardner.
Here.
Dean Hollingsworth.
Present.
Caroline Ebbard.
Present.
Councillors Maurice Dupell.
Present.
Glenn Grant.
Present.
Todd Bennett.
Present.
And councillor Eric Bergeron.
Present.
And we have regrets from councillor Towndale, madam mayor.
Any additions, deletions, or amendments? Councillor McDonald.
Thank you, madam mayor, and I would move that we move 14.1, the Proclamation of Paramedic Services Week, to Communications from Consent.
Thank you. Any other items? Madam Clerk?
I have none, madam mayor.
Adoption of the agenda. Moved by councillor McIntosh, seconded by councillor Gardner. Any discussion? So when I call for a vote, I'll ask the councillors on the phone first. All in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Everyone else in favor? Carried. Any disclosure of interest? Councillor Todd Bennett.
Could I ask that we have, in passing of bylaws, 2010 pulled out to be voted on separately? As it's, the property is in my backyard, basically.
Madam Clerk?
I have that under a note, madam mayor.
Thank you. Need a motion to go into Committee of the Whole. Councillor McDonald, councillor Grant, on the phone, all in favor?
In favor.
In the room, in favor? Carried. Adoption of minutes. So we have the meeting of May 11, 2020. Moved by councillor McDonald, seconded by councillor Bennett. Any discussion? All in favor on the phone?
In favor.
In the room? Carried. Madam Clerk?
Consent portion of the agenda. First report is the Ontario Regulation 28409, Budget Matter Expenses, with a recommendation that council receive this report as required by the municipal act. COVID-19 Temporary Pandemic Wage Subsidy, with a recommendation that council receive this report. And RFP, Terms of Reference for Supply and Maintenance of Multi-Function Devices, with a recommendation that council receive this report.
Moved by councillor Bennett, seconded by councillor Hollingsworth. Any discussion? All in favor on the phone?
In favor. Sorry, madam mayor, I just had one question.
Yes, councillor Dupell, go ahead.
I just wanted to know through you to, Mrs. Adams, I know that the report for 14.3 says that they were gonna, employers would get communication by May 15. Did we in fact get communication from the province?
Madam CAO?
Through you, madam mayor, no, we have not. So we also put this item on the agenda, which was published midweek last week, hoping that at some point in time, there might have been further communication from the province. So as it stands right now, we're still awaiting to try and understand exactly what positions and who will qualify. But I could also redirect it to Mr. Clark, who I think could speak to how quickly the city should be able to respond once we have better information.
Mr. Clark?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So administratively, the city is ready to proceed with this, once we receive direction and guidance from the province about how this is to be administered. We are ready to press the go button as soon as we find that out.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Clark. Thanks, madam mayor.
So councillors Dupell and Bergeron, in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In the room? Carried.
Our next item is an unfinished business report, closing of Pitt Street for COVID-19. Recommended that, A, council receive this report, B, that Pitt Street from third to first remain open to vehicles, and C, that downtown businesses be encouraged to make use of the city's encroachment agreement application, should they wish to increase restaurant or retail space.
Madam mayor.
Councillor Bergeron?
I'd like to make a motion to receive this report.
Is there a seconded for that? Councillor McIntosh?
I'll second that, madam.
Oh.
That's fine.
Councillor Dupell, you're seconding?
Sure.
Okay. Discussion, do you want to start off councillor Bergeron?
Point of order.
Yes, if I could.
Oh, sorry. Councillor Grant?
Are we just passing the one point here, or is it just the, to receive the report? Because it's three parts to it. Just for clarification.
Of course. Councillor Bergeron?
Motion is to receive the report.
And the other items? Will you be speaking to?
Those could be done separately afterwards.
Okay. So do you want to speak on your motion to receive the report?
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
I think it's important to comment. There's a few things that have come from this report, and so, there's actually a lot in it. I know that it was a short timeline, and I want to thank administration for putting it together so quickly. Business groups and some businesses weren't too happy, and they would have preferred more time to gather information, and that's very well received. So I spoke personally to the chamber, DBIA this week, and to discuss their feedback. The business leaders in those meetings know we as the council are trying to help them, and they've offered some solutions that are in this report. I also want to point out, we received a related report today, a survey of almost 200 local businesses, and 15% of them said they risk closing permanently in the next four to six months. That's almost 30 local businesses already stating that they've had to close in the coming months. That's one in six. So the conclusion for me is that we're in an economic emergency right now, and this request for this report is meant to help to deal with that. I think we've done a pretty good job at mitigating the medical emergency in this region. There's no Dr. Paul for the economy. And so, we as councillors, we make motions, we ask for reports. We're in a pandemic, so speed and not perfection is the mantra. So by asking for a report this way, we're able to get some feedback from the businesses, as well as the community, the BIA, the chamber, the police, Cornwall Transit, Economic Development, Planning, Engineering. We reviewed the encroachment process, and quite a few ideas have come forward. I think it's important to remember that as the council, we also have to factor in public safety when we make decisions. I see other cities setting up economic recovery teams, and that's one of the items of the feedback that we've received here from the chamber and the BIA. It's something I fully support, and that it would allow us maybe an avenue for talking about ideas in a different way. The report says the businesses don't want third to second closed, that's loud and clear, that's no problem. No motion, I don't think is required, because Pitt Street is already open. Some businesses, however, we're talking about maybe closing Pitt Street, south of Second Street, maybe on weekends. You know, I hear some compromise on that block, and so I don't want to make a motion that's going to get in the way of them succeeding through this pandemic. So the motion is to receive, so that their hands aren't tied. I saw that the province today is looking to speed up outdoor patio and licensing bylaws to prepare restaurants for expanding onto streets, so I look forward to that coming forward. These are the types of suggestions that sound like an economic recovery task force is necessary. And so I would ask therefore, madam mayor, that you set up, as per the suggestion, an economic recovery task force. And we as the council start treating the economic crisis that we're in like we have the health pandemic. We don't want to lose 15% of our local businesses. So therefore, I move to accept this report. I would also like to make a second motion to, about free parking, after we talk about this.
So this motion is to receive the report, and I have started a speakers list. Councillor Ebbard?
Thank you, madam mayor. I have no questions. I just really want to thank Mr. Bualow for this really excellent report, especially with such a short timeframe. I think the information that was provided to us was excellent, beyond my expectations, provided some history that I didn't have about Pitt Street, that I'm glad I was able to learn through this report, and glad to see that our downtown is already very pedestrian-friendly, and provides us with plenty of space for our local businesses to expand onto that pedestrian space in this time of COVID-19. But I'm quite grateful for this report. I think it was excellent. So thank you to you and your team for putting it together.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Councillor McIntosh?
I guess I'll direct this towards Mark. The encroachment agreement, I believe that was passed by council, remember councillor Towndale proposed it, I don't know who seconded, about two years ago. What's been the reaction in that time?
Mr. Bualow?
Through you, madam mayor. So that report was written in 2016. As you see, it's got quite a few pages to it. It's a very detailed report. The, it's unfortunate, the take-up on it was not what we expected. I think there are some opportunities on Pitt Street, certainly on Pitt Street, and it's really intended not just for Pitt Street, but for the downtown and La Vilage. It speaks to encroachments onto the city's right-of-way, hopefully in most situations onto, for example, the brick work, the pedestrian space on Pitt Street. And in fact, also allows, in a more complicated way though, the use of parking spaces for that same thing. I can speak further to that, but to answer your question, there was no uptake since the date. So the history that we have, of course, is, we have one or two or three, actually, we in fact have three current, sorry, two current encroachment agreements for restaurants. There is one that we used to have with Gemini Cafe, and unfortunately, of course, that restaurant is no longer there. So there are currently two restaurants, Schnitzels and Truffles, Truffles into the side yard. And as written in my report, I really highly recommend that more businesses, and I think there will be some businesses that come forward, not just restaurants, but perhaps even retail, who will come forward to take advantage. I know that there has been some concern raised in some of the correspondence of that system being a bit convoluted. I think there are some good reasons why the process involves as many different departments. For example, you know, if you're talking about a parking space, you're talking about, that's the city's right-of-way, and somebody's now using it for sales or restaurant, there are liability issues there. You want to make sure that people are in a very safe situation. So while I would agree that we would want to simplify the process, we can't simplify it to the point where it's not following permission from, you know, whether it be the police or the transportation department, or the, you know, municipal works, et cetera. So we want to make sure that people can make use of that space. That's why it was designed that way. And we would encourage people, and we'd be happy to work with them to make that happen.
I only had one comment from a business person, excuse me, I don't know if it's a fair comment or not, but he said, "You needed to be a Philadelphia lawyer to read the agreement," and that was scaring some people off. I don't, I've never read the agreement, so I don't know.
Well, if I can just make a comment on that, I, again, I read it in greater detail recently, and I would agree that there's a lot there. Again, though, I think we have to be very careful when we're putting the public on essentially the right-of-way. That information for the parking space situation is much more complicated than putting somebody onto the pedestrian space of our right-of-way. The process, though, you know, there's a flow chart that you have in your report, and as much as it looks a bit complicated, it's really just, an applicant makes an application to the planning department, the planning department circulates to other city departments and perhaps other agencies, the health unit, for example, may be one, and that comes to council, and there's a $370 one-time fee. So we can simplify it, and we can play with the fee, but it's really not that complicated. There is a lot of information that's required in the application, but it's all information that I would hesitate to remove anything from it, because I, you know, when you get into insurance and liability and permission, I think you want to get as much information as you need.
Yeah, I agree with you on the liability and the other issues. Just to something councillor Bergeron referred to was the survey that Bob Peters sent us about an hour ago. Surprising, shocking in some ways. Obviously, anything we can do to help retail, we'd really appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Bualow, can you reference that survey that councillor McIntosh just spoke of?
It's a survey that was put out by SD&amp;G, together with the city of Cornwall. I think it asked a number of questions. I don't have the information in front of me, unfortunately. If I was to go back and perhaps give you a bit of information later, I can do that. I just unfortunately don't have it here in front of me. But I can make reference to it later, if you wish.
That's fine. I just want to make sure that the audience knows that they can also access that report on the Choose Cornwall website, I believe?
Yes.
So that's also good information for people. Any other questions from council or comments? Councillor Gardner?
Really only have a comment, and during the past meeting, when we were talking about Pitt Street and the closure, one of the things I said to you, Mark, was, Mr. Bualow, was to come back with a report, and the report that you wrote and you came back with in a short period of time, I really appreciate it, and I thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Councillor Dupell?
I don't have any at this time, madam mayor.
Okay. So I will just add some comments. So you did have a very tight timeframe to produce a report, and so I do want to also thank you for how thorough this report is. And it does provide some really good historical information, which is a reminder of what we had back in the day. My understanding is that people want to make sure that their businesses are not impacted by any kind of activity that is going to reduce access to the downtown. However, in my conversations with business owners, there's a real difference between how restaurants feel about this and how stores feel about it. And so, you know, that might merit further conversation. I am part of the Eastern Ontario Mayor's Caucus, and I know that in other cities in eastern Ontario, including Kingston, they are looking at doing a temporary type of lane reduction and/or periodic closure of part of their downtown to accommodate particularly restaurants. The city of Kingston also references the province becoming involved to make things easier for restaurants who want to enlarge their patios as well. So we know that there's a lot of discussion going on, but I do want to thank administration for getting ahead of this. You, in fact, started to talk to business owners ahead of the last council meeting, because you were dealing with curbside. And so you were already canvassing the DBIA and the Chamber of Commerce, so I do appreciate that. The comment about the economic recovery or task force is a good one. Again, at the Eastern Ontario Mayor's Caucus, and the CAO was present, and the CAO, in fact, has been talking to other CAOs and has been talking about an economic recovery or task force for the last few weeks. And the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce also raised that possibility in the last few weeks. So I might ask the CAO to speak of her understanding of an economic recovery task force, her experience with other municipalities.
Thank you, madam mayor. I think that what I've been able to gather from some other municipalities, if a task force was put together, it would have a composition of many different types of businesses, different sectors, some staff, some elected officials, really with a focus of brainstorming if there are things that could be moved really with a focus of brainstorming if there are things that could be moved upon quicker by bringing all of the right representatives together to potentially make a decision or look at something. I have not seen terms of reference for some of these task forces yet, but I might be able to obtain some. And then I think, depending on the municipality, there might be a slightly different approach. I know that in Prince Edward County, part of their approach really is about safe tourism as well, because I think they're anticipating an influx of tourists still into their region. So it depends a little bit, I think, on the area, but it's something that I think certainly could be put together.
Yes, and our neighbors in Eastern Ontario are very willing to share all of their best practices. So it's a good one, and we can proceed with that. And we've started to have conversation about that. So that was just a comment in response to Council Bergeron's comments. I also had, you know, through Facebook Live, some very good discussions with business owners. And so I think we need to continue that conversation. They have very good ideas, very big ideas. And depending on their point of view, they do want to have chats with each other and amongst themselves. So I thank the DBIA and the Chamber of Commerce for being so available, so quick to respond to surveys, and so quick to provide information for this report. So much appreciated. I'll call for the vote. On the phone, in favor of receiving the report?
In favor.
In the room, all in favor? Against, carried.
I'd like to make a second motion, Madam Mayor, if I may.
Council Bergeron, what's your motion?
Related to the report, let the City of Cornwall implement and enforce free one-hour free parking in our downtown business district and two-hour free parking in our downtown parking lots, as per the report.
So I'm going to have to either refer to the CAO or the clerk as to the motion and the timing of this motion?
Through you, Madam Mayor. It is my opinion that this motion is not germane to this report itself.
Why is that, Madam Clerk?
Because this deals with the closing of Pitt Street. And there was a separate motion made at our last meeting asking for a report on parking, and that one will be coming at our next meeting.
Council Bergeron?
Well, that report was supposed to be at this meeting. This is only a motion for the downtown.
So...
As per the request.
Right. Can someone remind me as to when the, so there were several motions at the last council meeting. When, what was the schedule for producing the reports?
The parking report was supposed to be on this agenda. It has been prepared, but was just missing a little bit of information and didn't make it on time for our production of this agenda. So it's been pushed back to the next meeting of June 8th.
So I did, at the last meeting, state that because the motions had come rather quickly, that I would grant a lot of leeway in terms of the administration providing the report when they could. So, Mr. Balo, you will have something for us on June 8th?
Absolutely. If I may, also, Madam Mayor...
Please go ahead.
There was, there is more information that's required. The more we got into this subject, the more we realized we need to better understand our entire parking program, working with the Finance Department, trying to understand, you know, the money that we're collecting, what impact it would have if we weren't collecting it, where do we use that money. All of that needs to be looked at, and the impact of doing something like this. I also want to point out that, at this time, the city is not charging for parking in any event.
Right.
So, and in fact, we've not really given a whole lot of thought to starting that process up until we get into a more normal economic situation. So while the motion is looking for a one-hour or two-hour parking relief, the fact of the matter is, for the next two weeks, we're not charging at any of those, at any city locations. I should point out, though, that contraventions, of course, parking in fire lanes and in front of, et cetera, would still, is still a violation, but regular parking fees are not being applied.
Okay. So Council, Council Bergeron, the, so your motion would need to come forward June 8th? And I would recommend that the wording that you've used today, that you communicate that to administration as soon as possible so that their report of June 8th can address or start to take a look at what you're looking at. But in the meantime, it's clear that parking right now downtown is free at this point.
May I add, Tom, if I may?
The other thing I'd like to say is that parking is a major issue. I know that we've been talking about that, and the merchants have been talking about that for a long time. It's important that the report be complete so that we can have a full discussion on June 8th. But yes, go ahead and comment, Council Bergeron.
I just want to say, I just pointed out that one out of six businesses in our community already are telling us that they cannot survive this pandemic. If we want to wait another two weeks, that's fine. I understand procedure. But the Chamber of Commerce, the DBIA, is asking us to initiate free parking immediately. And so that's why I've made this motion. If we want to wait two weeks, that's fine. But that's two more weeks of businesses in the city suffering because of procedure.
Mr. Balo, it's my understanding the parking is free now?
That is correct.
So right now, businesses, do businesses understand that parking is free? Does the community understand that? Should there be more discussion about that?
We could, I could work with Emma to make sure that people understand that. I can tell you, though, that our collection is making it quite clear that people know that parking is free.
Our revenues are...
Non-existent.
Right, okay. So, but again, to my point, there may be more information that could go out so that there's clarity around that for the community. Certainly, when this started, we didn't yell that from the rooftops. Some cities did, we did not. So we could probably use more information going out to the public. Mr. Balo?
Yes. What I'd like to say on that is that, of course, when most operations were closed, there was really not a need to publicize it because we were making it clear in some of our meetings with council, and I think the media did pick up on that. But I think we can do a better job of making it clear, especially now that some uses are opening up. We can make that very clear. We can do that as immediately as today or tomorrow. But yes, absolutely, the revenue, you know, the revenues are showing that the public are aware, but we can make it very clear.
Thank you, Mr. Balo. And I can certainly personally communicate with the Chamber of Commerce and with the DBIA's, both, to have a discussion about that. But it does sound like a full report will be available June 8th, and that we will have a full council discussion on the issue of parking. Council Bergeron, anything further?
Yes. I would just comment that in an email from the Chamber and the DBIA today, they said, "This will send a powerful message to the area merchants and restaurateurs, and will encourage customers to spend their money locally in our downtown again." They are asking for it immediately, and we, as a council, are saying our process is in the way. And that, to me, is just unfortunate.
Well, I will be speaking personally to the DBIA and to the Chamber of Commerce to tell them that parking is free right now. So we'll continue with that, and then we'll have a full discussion on June 8th. Any other comments from council?
Just to follow up.
Council Bergeron?
No.
Anybody else? Council McIntosh?
Council Bergeron is leaving the impression that we're doing something nasty here by delaying it two weeks. There's free parking now, and there's going to be free parking probably till this thing's over. I mean, and I haven't seen anything official from the BIA and the Chamber presentation saying, hey, you know, we need the free parking right now.
So their correspondence is in with the report. Both Mr. Petersma and Ms. Woods did include correspondence. Certainly, the Chamber's correspondence speaks to parking. We know this is an issue that's been coming up for a while. But no, we're not, we're not doing anything nasty. Parking is free, and we need to make sure that that's communicated to the public so that there's an understanding. And as I said, I will speak personally to both those organizations and Le Village to make sure that that's clear. Okay. Council Gardner?
Point of order, Madam Mayor. We've, the motion was passed, there's no motion on the floor. We're talking without having any motion, and that's totally against procedure bylaws. So let's move on to our agenda.
I'm going to recognize, that's right. I'm going to recognize Council Gardner, and then we'll move forward. Council Gardner?
On the same subject of the downtown businesses, I'd like to know how many businesses applied for the $5,000 loan.
So that'll, that'll be coming later.
That'll be coming up.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Madam Mayor, if I may, is that the only motion that's being suggested on this?
Clearly.
I will move on to the next item, then. Tax write-offs adjustments under Communication has a recommendation that council approve the tax write-offs adjustments vacancies under Sections 357 and 364 of the Municipal Act.
Moved by? Council Grant and Council Ebert, any discussion or questions? On the phone?
Madam Mayor, I'm just trying to get a point of clarification from the, did we vote on the other two from 16.1?
Yes, we did. We voted on the, to receive the report?
Right, but it says that council received this report, and that Pitt Street from third to first remain open. I thought Council Bergeron said they were...
There were no further...
You only wanted to vote on...
Oh, did you want to make another motion?
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to follow along, and I...
Right. There were no further motions after that. The only motion was to receive the report.
Therefore, the traffic remains open?
Yes, correct.
Downtown businesses are encouraged to make use of the city's encroachment agreement?
Correct.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
No, no, that's fine. So on the phone, for the tax write-offs item?
No comments.
Council Dupell? Are you in favor?
In favor.
Okay. In the room? All in favor? Against? Carried.
Our next report is the April CPAC at 165 Montreal Road, 145 Pitt, 134 Montreal Road, and 711 Pitt Street. And the action recommended is that council approve the following items for 264, 2200 Ontario Inc. at 165 Montreal Road, Elizabeth and Chris Nurse at 145 Pitt Street, 194, 3217 Ontario Inc. at 134 Montreal Road, and 127, 1450 Ontario Limited at 115 Sydney Street, addendum for Brownfield.
Moved by?
I'll move the motion, Madam Mayor.
Council Dupell, seconded by Counselor McDonald, discussion. Questions? On the phone, in favor?
In favor.
In the room, in favor? Against? Carried.
Now we have our proclamation that was moved to Communication. The action recommended is that council proclaim the week of May 24th as Paramedic Services Week 2020 in the City of Cornwall.
Moved by? Counselor McDonald, seconded by Counselor Gardner. Counselor McDonald, did you want to speak?
I'd love to, Madam Mayor, because I'm pleased to note that the head of our paramedic services is in the room, and I hope that he will convey to all our paramedics that we are so grateful to them for the work they're doing and through them and associated with them, all the other people who are responding simply because it's their job. And to them, they're doing their job, but to us, they're performing heroic service to the community, and we're very grateful.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Council Gardner?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Oh.
Really quick one, ditto.
Ditto, okay. Council Bergeron, was that you?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I'd just like to add, the report says that paramedics are important, and I believe them to be essential.
Thank you, Council Bergeron. Council Dupell?
I'm great, Madam Mayor.
Any other comments from council? I'd just like to add, Chief Lister, I know that you lost your mother recently during this time, and I spoke of it at the last council meeting, but I want to say that in your presence. I know that it must be so difficult to lose somebody during this time in particular, and to have to grieve in a way that is not our usual process, and all the while, continuing to provide excellent service and leadership concerning our paramedic service. And to all the paramedics out there, I'm sure that you know that Dr. Paul Romeliotis, our medical officer of health, has repeatedly praised all of you, all of the service. You have all worked in remarkable partnership, particularly during this COVID-19 situation. And so we are grateful and very proud of the work that all of you are doing. And it's very fitting to highlight your service during this particular week. So merci beaucoup, thank you very much. All in favor?
In favor.
On the phone, thank you. Carried.
Moving on to tenders, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Tender 2023 Maintenance of Traffic Control Signals and Flasher Systems, with a recommendation that this tender be awarded for a five-year period effective August 1st, with an option to extend the contract for an additional two years to Black &amp; McDonald Limited from Ottawa, Ontario, at the total bid price of $2,160,673 even.
Moved by? Counselor Grant, seconded by Counselor Gardner. Discussion? Counselor Gardner?
I wondered, when I was looking through the report, was this company the only one that bid on it? Or were there any other companies that bid on this tender?
Madam CAO?
Through you, Madam Mayor, there was only one bid received.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? On the phone, all in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In the room, in favor? Against? Carried.
Purchase of transit buses through the Transit Procurement Initiative, with a recommendation that council approve the purchase of two conventional buses from Nova Bus through the MetroLink's Transit Procurement Initiative process.
Moved by? Counselor McDonald, seconded by Counselor Bennett. Discussion? All in favor? On the phone?
In favor.
In favor.
In the room? All in favor? Carried.
Bylaws, Madam Mayor. That bylaws, 2020, 66 to 74 inclusive, listed on the agenda, are being presented to council for adoption.
Moved by? Counselor Grant, seconded by Counselor McDonald. All in favor? In the room, favor? On the phone?
In favor.
In favor.
Carried.
In our second motion, we're looking for bylaws, is to approve bylaw to authorize the sale of extended Marguerite du Ville and extended Easton Avenue.
Moved by? Counselor McDonald, seconded by Counselor McIntosh. Any discussion? All in favor? On the phone?
In favor.
In the room? Carried.
Can I ask one question?
Go ahead, Counsel McIntosh.
New business?
We're actually, right now, at the reports from committees of council.
Okay, I just had a motion I want to present under new business.
Okay. Okay. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Uh, so do we have any reports from committees of council?
Want to do that first and then go to new business after? Counselor Mack, are you okay with that?
Fine.
So reports from committees of council and I'll also um take any questions that councillors may have about COVID-19 and how the city is responding. So Counselor Gardner, your question about the small business loan could happen here or uh any question related to how we're dealing with COVID-19. So I'll start with Counselor Gardner and then Counselor Ebert and then Counselor McDonald.
Phil, my question is, how many businesses responded to the $5,000 loan that we're giving out?
Mr. Bollum.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Uh, so there were 106 applications that were received. Uh, council will, will recall that we were counting on a ballpark of about 100 applications and so the estimation was very uh close to being uh correct. We received 104 uh before the deadline, so 106 applications, 104 before the deadline. Uh, and there were, most I, I would suggest were, were uh very good and uh very, very qualified for the application. Eighty of those applications have been approved. Um, uh, I know Tracy Bailey and Dana McLean worked uh to review all of those and uh and uh those 80 will be processed uh as soon as we uh can do that. There were three uh that were from out-of-town businesses, so there are some that uh weren't qualifying. Uh, so three were out of town, two for, were nonprofit organizations and so therefore, again, that was outlined as being not applicable. So there, that leaves us with 101. One application withdrew, so that brings us to 100. Um, and of course, with the two being late, it uh brings us to the number 98. But again, uh, 80 were very quickly approved. Uh, they will be processed uh very quickly. Uh, a little bit more thought to go on the balance of the applications, but uh I believe perhaps if there's more to say, Tracy Bailey can add a bit more on, on the balance of, of the applications, but I think I want to thank Dana and, and everyone who worked on this. It was done in a pretty quick uh uh and efficient way. And I think uh hit the mark on what the businesses were looking for.
I asked the question because I spoke to a number of business owners who really were in pretty good shape and they weren't going to be in need of that money, so that was, that was good news. So thank you for the work. Uh, I know the, the day that it was brought up, that you said it would be a lot of work. Uh, and so I appreciate what you've done, you and your staff. Thank you.
Counselor Ebert and then Counselor McDonald.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You allowed me to speak on the subject at our last council meeting, so I just wanted to follow up. Um, at our last meeting, I spoke about the Regional Emergency Response Council and the delivery of uh hampers, groceries to seniors or vulnerable people. Uh, that did take place over the last two weeks and I just wanted to take a moment to thank the city of Cornwall and all of its staff members who stepped up to support us. Uh, without the city's support, we could not have accomplished such a, a large project. Uh, from the staff at the Benson Center, we basically just moved in uh for two weeks and they were really great. Um, to Transit, who provided us with buses to do deliveries, um, to the bylaw staff who did deliveries as well. Um, we also had uh municipal work staff and I think they might still be picking up boxes at grocery stores for us to pack these groceries in. Uh, and finally, I really want to thank the staff um from Richeleure Daycare that were basically redeployed to us for the two-week period. And they uh were absolutely amazing. And without them, I don't think we could have accomplished what we did. They worked harder than I could have ever asked for, um, and did it with a smile. Uh, and I think we enjoyed every moment of, of it and I, and I um of course would really hope that they uh can get back to work as soon as possible, but if we do this project again, I'm hoping they can hold off and help us because they were really amazing and I want to just shout out to all of them, to the seven ladies who are with us this whole time. Um, they were absolutely amazing and we said all week that, you know, we only hire the best with the city of Cornwall and this was proof. They were fantastic. So thank you to all of them. Thanks to everyone. Thank you to um our CFO who allowed us all of this support. Uh, we certainly could not have done it without all of the city's support. And so all of the partners involved are quite grateful and uh just wanted to take this moment to express that gratitude.
Thank you for that report. Um, I know that the CFO said that um city employees were almost fighting to be able to be involved in this project and certainly the, the ones that I met and spoke to confirm that. Um, and they, they got more out of it, they say, than what they put into it. So.
Great.
Um, yes, kudos to all of them, to all of your volunteers. And uh, yes, remarkable work. We've heard, we've had emails from uh people who have received the hampers, they've written letters to the editor, so they, they have expressed their gratitude as well and it's been lovely.
Excellent.
Good work. Thank you. Counselor McDonald.
Thank you, uh, Madam Mayor. I just want to give a shout out to the uh, the administrative staff of Cornwall Area Housing Corporation because in this time when they could have locked the doors and put a sign on the, on the uh window saying uh, you know, call this number or whatever. Because of the physical layout of the office, they felt they were able to keep the door unlocked so that if people came to the door, they could actually enter the premises and um not have immediate human interaction with anybody. But through a glass, they could certainly communicate with people. If they chose to use that way to, to pay their rent, the way they always have, in person, they could do so. And um, I, I think it meant a lot to people because Cornwall Area Housing Corporation manages the households of 1,400 people in this, not more than 1,400 people, 1,400 apartments. So um, I think it's a really um key um action on the part of the administration to keep the doors unlocked.
Thank you. Any other reports, standing committees? Any questions related to COVID-19?
I have a question, Madam Mayor.
Counselor Bergeron, go ahead.
Uh, it was for, it was for Mr. Bollum during his updates. Sorry, I, I didn't think we got away from that.
No, that's fine.
Uh, he mentioned that, he mentioned that 80 uh applicants, or roughly 80, were going to receive this. Were there any people who applied after the deadline who didn't uh, that we just didn't allow? Is there room uh to continue this moving forward if we don't set a deadline to it?
Mr. Bollum. Is it Madam CFO then?
Yes, through you, Madam Mayor. We haven't had the conversation yet regarding the two applications that have come in late. Uh, there is room uh for them to be included in the 100. If we go uh or accept applications of more than 100, uh, we would uh come to council to understand what that funding of those applications would look like uh through our Brownfields reserve possibly. Maybe the CFO would like to comment further.
Mr. Bollum?
Um, I've been giving a little bit of thought of that as well. Um, I think if we're going to accept any of the late applications, uh, I think you would perhaps want to give some consideration to having a, opening it up a little bit for a bit of, a bit of time because someone may have wanted to apply and didn't apply because they would have been late. So you may want to give some consideration to having it open for just a, another week or something to allow for those who wanted to and didn't get to, so that you're not just giving in favor of those two applications. You, you may be giving in favor of 20 applications. I, I don't know what the number would be, but it would seem to me that if I didn't apply because I knew I was late and then you, you allow those two, that uh, anyway.
I'll just, um, I'll ask the CFO for comment here. Uh, would this be the place for a motion as, to that effect if, if a councillor wanted to make that motion? About extending the deadline or determining whether we should accept those two or additional time?
Sorry. Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, we could uh entertain a motion from council to, if they wanted to allow us to extend the program, I mean, today's Monday, we could extend the program to um end of day Friday, for example. Uh, I think that, like, we budgeted a pretty, it was a pretty good plan that came together. So I think that if there were, if it was an opportunity to open up again, we might see more applications. I don't think we would see a um, I, I don't.
Floodgates or?
No, no, right? So I think that it would be an amount that I would say financially and reasonably could be managed.
Okay, thank you. I'm still um gonna go back to Counselor Bergeron for comment. I do recognize that I'll turn to calling, uh, Counselor Hollingsworth in a minute. Counselor Bergeron?
Thank you. The point I'm trying to make is, look, uh, in the report we received a day from our economic development department, almost half of the business, uh, businesses said they applied for loans that they didn't receive. Now, this doesn't mean this loan. It means just in general that support they're looking for, they haven't received. So whatever we can do to extend that deadline, to make it easier, uh, I'll make that motion today. Uh, I don't want to have any business in the city think that a deadline is what's preventing them from surviving.
So what's your motion, Counselor Bergeron? Is it, is it?
That we, we just extend the deadline uh and, until the amount is exhausted, I suppose.
All right. So the amount has been exhausted, right? Had we, had we budgeted for 100 applications?
That is correct. Um, so it was, it's, it's essentially uh $100,000 in grant money and the balance is loan. So you're talking about $100,000 in 100 approved applications. Of course, if, you know, it's a multiple of $1,000, it, whichever applications you approved, uh, you approve going forward.
Right. So is your motion, Counselor Bergeron, to extend the deadline to this Friday?
Yes, that would be the, the, the motion.
Okay.
Madam, point of order again.
Yes. Counselor Grant.
This is reports from standing committees. This isn't even a standing committee. Uh, this is, if he wants to put a new motion on, it comes under new business. It could come as a result of this, but this is totally out of order right now.
So I just had a conversation with the CFO to determine whether this is a good time for this motion. I do want to remind people that this needs to be timely and so these funds need to go out as soon as possible. So I'm willing to say and agree with the CFO that we can make this motion at this time due to the emergency situation of COVID-19 and businesses needing money now.
But, I'm a procedure guy and we've got a, a motion that was on the votes that we would have to amend in order to extend both the time and the amount. Because with 100, we've extended, we've taken all the uh amount that we have approved, right?
So I'm going to accept the motion.
Those dollars going to come from, et cetera, et cetera.
Understood. So I'm going to accept the motion and see if there's a seconder and then we can have a discussion. Seconder for the motion, Counselor Gardner. Did you want to speak first or should I recognize call, Counselor Hollingsworth first?
Well, I can't speak because I think it's out of order. So I don't, I'm not gonna even uh debate this because it's totally out of order.
Okay. Counselor Hollingsworth?
Uh, two things, Your Worship. I can live with the motion. I, I, but I kind of agree with Counselor Grant in that there's no reason why that motion couldn't have been made when we get to new business. And uh, just, well, I won't TV it, I'll hold out till later. So I can accept, I, the one thing that I have a, maybe a question before I carry on here. Currently, Mr. Bollum, did I understand you correctly? The money that we set aside right now is spent. Like, we've allocated it or we, we anticipate there'll be enough people who have met the criteria that all of the money that council currently set aside has been spent, correct?
I think we're working through you, Madam Mayor. We're working through, within the parameters that were described by council. We're working within that budget. Uh, if, if we were to go beyond 100 applic, approve beyond 100, 100 applications, it is money that exceeds the, the motion from the last. Although, although I should, I should indicate also though, that we did indicate that we were going to report back to council uh should there be, should the applications have been much larger. In fact, um, that was the reason why we gave updates from time to time to council. Uh, you know, there was a time when we wondered whether perhaps we were gonna get 500 applications.
Yes.
Uh, and we would have had to come back to council.
Okay, well, well, I'll carry on from there. Currently, did I hear you right? Did you say 80 applications?
Have been, have been approved by staff.
Approved. Which means the 500,000, I, I forgive me if, I'm not sure if I completely heard you or understood you correctly. So we have 80 applications, the $500,000 that we set aside as a budgetary item and said, you know, we're gonna get some of the money back when people pay the loan. We're giving $100,000 as grant money. Can I, like, is that $500,000 currently been used up? If the 80 groups all meet the criteria? Are we out of money, I guess is what I'm trying to say?
No. 80 applications would be $400,000.
So we still have $100,000 left over for people who could apply from now till Friday? We, there is money? Okay, see, that's where I'm, I'm not getting it.
We have what we think to be plus or minus, up to 100 applications that could be approved. But there are currently 80 that are approved.
Okay, so now I understand. Conceivably, if every, the remaining ones that we haven't approved, if we said, yeah, they're all in, we are currently out of money if everybody meets the criteria based on the committee, uh, the criteria the committee has in place. Does that make sense?
That is correct.
Okay, so that being said, I guess a question back either to the CFO or the CFO, it really doesn't matter to me who answers it. If we said, the motion currently on the floor, in order or not as debatable, but the point is, if council says, yeah, that's great, we're gonna leave it open till Friday and we get 10 more applications. Let's use that as a number, five, I don't even know. But if we even get five applications, conceivably, we have to try to find some money from somewhere, correct?
Madam CFO.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. So if we, I would recommend if council wanted to consider uh extending the deadline to this Friday, then what we would do is, with the deadline ending on Friday, that would likely allow staff to get through all of those applications the week following. And then although we might not have a report ready quite when we publish the agenda, we should be able to have a report that we could add to a published agenda either at the end of the week or walk on the next council agenda with financial implications and then council can decide if they wanted to um, they could decide how they want to take a look at funding those applications, whether they want to fund it the same way we have for the first 100.
Okay, so perhaps, Madam CFO, you can reconcile my dilemma. I'm gonna make a, a vote in favor of a motion, or we as a council could conceivably vote in favor of a motion to extend the deadline, but we haven't determined where the money is going to come from at the moment that we in fact support the motion. Is that not kind of backwards to the how we have historically done? And I realize there's a pandemic, but you don't throw all the rules out the window and say, well, let's just kinda, I think there needs to be at least some structured figuring out, I mean, we're, we're talking about taxpayers' money and I'm not saying that I want to see businesses go broke, but I think we kind of still have to figure out what we're doing. So how do we reconcile supporting a motion when we as a council, along with senior admin, have not determined where we're getting the money from currently? And further to that, I don't think it's fair to say, hey, we've got this program, apply for it and then can, it's possible that the council, council might say, gee, we, we really don't know where we're gonna get the money, so we're not gonna extend it. We extended the program, but so how do we reconcile what we traditionally do with what's going on right now with this motion?
Madam CFO.
Uh, through you, Madam Mayor. So based on the activity that we saw from the previous program, I, I think that, you know, maybe on an upside potential, maybe we might get 50 applications if we extended the deadline to Friday, maybe.
Okay.
Whether or not they'd all, whether or not they'd all qualify, um, with respect to the $1,000 grant component, that would become a budgetary item that would fall in the same process for the first 100. So we'd, instead of budgeting 50,000 one year and 50,000 the other year, we would end up budgeting, uh, 75,000 in each of those years. Uh, there is sufficient funds within the brownfield reserve. If council felt that that reserve was gonna get too low with the report that we brought back to council, uh, there are other reserves that we have on our, on our balance sheet, right? So again, it's back to council. As far as funding it from a reserve, I think that through the CFO, she can come back with a recommendation for council. The question would be, with those additional applications, do you wanna add another $25,000, you know, to 2021 and 2022 to allow another 50 applications?
Well, then perhaps a quick comment if I might, Your Worship. Certainly recognizing we're in extenuating circumstances and nobody wants to see businesses go down the tubes because of something that we could conceivably do to help them. I'll in fact support the motion, but quite frankly, I am really, really not particularly comfortable with the way this is playing itself out. That being said, if moving forward, I probably won't support any other motions that kind of plunge in headlong when I'm not completely clear as to how we're gonna manage it, particularly when it comes to taxpayers' dollars. And while I'm not the, don't wanna be the big heavy here, and, but I think, I'm not, I don't like the idea of, we have rules in place, we have procedures in place because our responsibility is to safeguard the public purse even in times of dire straits. So I'll support this one. But moving forward, I'll have my reservations. Make no mistake about that. Thank you.
Any other comments? Council McIntosh?
The, um, has any been turned down, not qualified, the applications you've received?
Through you, Madam Mayor. We approved 80, and, um, the ones that did not qualify, as Mr. Bwalo mentioned, were based on the criteria of the program, whether it be out of town or, or not-for-profit. The others were waiting further information. It could be that if we don't receive that information, they wouldn't qualify. But if we do, we suspect they will qualify.
What, what's the deadline for that information?
That was, uh, sent out to them at, uh, the end of last week and today. So normally, we ask for a 48-hour turnaround. Uh, I would think any, any, any day.
Madam C A O?
Uh, through you, Madam Mayor. Maybe I could suggest, uh, we have 80 applications that have been approved, and I would anticipate that those applications could be funded this week, provided that agreements get signed, and I think we can work very quickly through that. What we could do too is we could bring a report back at the next council meeting with the 20 or so remaining applications that we might need more information on. We might be able to come back to council and identify out of those ones that we need additional information, how many have been, uh, successful as, as far as the criteria goes, or if there's some that we think do not qualify. There might be some money that is not spent. We could bring back, uh, other information in the report to speak to what types of businesses or sectors benefited from it. So we could bring back a report, have the financial information, and at that point in time, if council wanted to do a round two, for example, and if you wanted to add money to it, or you wanted to just allow the money that's still remaining to get used until, uh, applications, um, for as long as it takes for applications to use up those funds, we can come back with that information.
That sounds like a good idea.
Any further comment?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Council Dupell and then Council Gardner. Council Dupell?
I would prefer doing the option that Mrs. Adams just presented, because I was going to speak in regards in the same line as Council Hallingsworth, like, why this just wouldn't go as a new business motion. And then as a new business motion, you have what's being asked. And right now, we're sort of, like, have the cart before the horse. So I, I would, I would much more appreciate, uh, what Ms. Adams has just said, so that it's a clear and transparent at our next meeting.
Thank you. Council Gardner?
Well, here's one time when I agree with, uh, Council Bergeron. Earlier on, Council Bergeron talked about this businesses that we can save. At the end of the day, if we can save two or three more businesses by giving them a loan, and that's the key word, it's a loan. That money isn't given away, it's a loan. So yeah, that's why I seconded the motion, because if we can save two, three, five businesses, um, that's what I wanna do. And policy be done. The, the, the policies are there to guide us, not to restrict us. So in this case here, uh, I agree with Council Bergeron, and I seconded the motion because I wanna see this pass.
Thank you. Madam C A O, did you want to comment in response to Council McIntosh and Council Dupell?
With respect to bringing back a report?
Mm-hmm. And whether that's in contradiction with having an extension until this Friday for applications?
I think that when we, um, when we originally brought forward the program to council, what we had also recommended in that pro- process was to allow administration to review those applications. And by doing so very quickly, we were, uh, hoping that we'd be able to get funds out before the end of May. And so I'm gonna say that that has been successful. We're gonna be able to do that. We also said that we would bring back a report to council with information so they understood, uh, how that, how that program worked out. So we do owe a report to council. Uh, the remaining, some of the remaining applications are up to the 80 were approved, uh, today. I know that, uh, Mrs. Bailey and, uh, Ms. McLean met today to, uh, continue to work through those applications. So that is the update as of this evening. I think that, uh, we'll be through it before the end of the week. It's really, if council would like to, and I think if, if people were struggling to make the deadline for applications, if the community knows that council might be reconsidering opening up the deadline, uh, or doing a round two, then we can get a report ready to come back at the next council meeting. And we could, I think now that we've been through the program as well, we can probably work through that process again pretty quickly a second time around. So it's, it's, it's really up to council to make the decision. I don't think that, so from a budgeting perspective, it is not all loan, by the way. Uh, five, each application is for $5,000. And of that $5,000, $1,000 of the loan is forgivable, or essentially in the form of a grant. But, uh, so I'm not sure if those comments help, but.
Okay, thank you. Council Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I'm hearing both, both sides of the argument here, and I, I get both sides. So I'd maybe like to propose a bit of a compromise, if it's possible. Why don't we, if it's possible to extend the deadline to Friday, but to only gauge the interest, uh, in extending, in, in the loan going forward, and then at the next council meeting, uh, administration will be able to come to us and say, five people, five people in that week applied, so if you wanna move forward, this is what it's gonna cost, this is how we're gonna fund it. Uh, rather than skip past policies, and we're not shutting it down, we'll just have a better idea what we're talking about, uh, in two weeks' time. So I don't know if the, if the original mover, uh, how he feels about that, but I think a compromise, at the very least, would answer a lot of the questions that are being asked.
Council Bergeron?
As far as I understand, we have not exhausted all of the funds that we have already set aside, which is the purpose of this motion. One in six businesses are already saying they're gonna close. Another two weeks is too long.
Council Bennett, do you have any response?
It's, it's my understanding that with the applications that we, that still need to be gone through, uh, that the money could very well be all spent. So if we're going to ask for more, uh, more money, then, um, perhaps we, we should just open it up to gauge the interest. And, um, at the next meeting, we'll know exactly how much more than the 100, than the 500,000 we're gonna need to deal with.
Thank you. Council Grant?
I'm trying to keep my cool, because
I appreciate that.
We're talking about policies that has, there's no such thing as a policy. It's procedural bylaws. We have a motion on the books that says, these are the criteria. If we want to change that, we put an amendment to that with specifics to give direction to administration, where the money's coming from, et cetera. I don't think any of us are against helping the business people. But we've got a procedural bylaw here that we have to follow. We can't just, someday, well, we'll follow it, and the next day we won't. The clerk is the one that should be giving us guidance on this as far as the procedures go. And there's something should have been directed toward her. She's the one to, that ensures that the procedures are followed. We have to follow those procedures or change them. So the reason I, I would speak on this, if we followed the proper procedures, we aren't. And therefore, it is out of order. And the clerk, in my estimation, should be indicating that with somebody asked her.
I turn to the C A O.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'm gonna acknowledge, uh, Council Grant's comments, and I think you're right. And I think that, uh, the discussion opened up to talk about this program, and there was always talk, if we go back several weeks ago, there was always talk about what is the right amount of money. So initially, when the motion was to allow the deadline to extend, to use up the utilization of those funds, um, I, I think that all I'm trying to do is trying to help council continue with that program if council would like to. It is pretty straightforward for administration just to have a report to come back in two weeks. Most of the applications will get funded this week. We turned the program around pretty quickly. I don't believe a two-week delay would really, uh, change the world. So that's, that's just my comments. If we wanna refer it back to the clerk, I think the clerk would agree with you, Council Grant. The way the motion has been kind of moved around, and now it's turning into additional funding, I would agree that procedurally, uh, it's moving in a direction that I don't believe was originally how the discussion started. It started as an update on the program.
If you don't mind, Madam Mayor?
Council Grant?
I think that's a good way of doing it. We get, we're waiting for a report back, and that was, I think, part of the discussion at the time. Is there an urgency in this? I don't think there is. But I'd be open, if the report comes back, to help businesses. I don't think anybody's arguing that. Let's follow procedures. That's all I'm saying.
Any further comment on this before I turn to?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Before I turn to Council Bergeron, any further comment from any other counselor? So I will, um, agree with Madam C A O. I think that we're saying the same thing. We're all saying the same thing. We all want to support businesses. The extension of the deadline to Friday just makes sense because we're still in this period of time where we're asking businesses if they need our support. So it's logical to extend that to May 15th, or May 29th. So my understanding of the motion is that we're going to extend the deadline to this Friday, and that the C A O has indicated that administration will report back. Administration told us the first time that they presented this program that they would close it, give a deadline, and then come back to, talk to us about further applications or further uptake. So this is not a surprising conversation that we're having now. So to me, it's the same thing. And the other point that I wanna make is we do have to proceed quickly, and we don't wanna be confusing there for the public. So the public knows that we've had this deadline. If we extend it this week, and then come back to council with a report as to how many applications came in after that date, how to deal with the two that were late, and then we'll have information as to what impact that's gonna have on our brownfield reserve. I'm comfortable with this motion as it is. I'm comfortable that it makes sense from a time flow, and I'm comfortable that we will get the information that we need so that we continue to make responsible decisions as we have been throughout this entire pandemic. Council Bergeron?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I'm actually closer to Council Grant's general philosophy than maybe, uh, maybe, maybe foresee. If this motion is out of order, I will withdraw it. But I haven't heard that. And what, what I understand, look, our businesses, one in six are closing right now. The time to move is right now. If it needs to be a new business motion, instead of as per this conversation, so be it. I'll make the motion. No problem. But two weeks from now, we're talking about other businesses who need this money already being closed. And that, to me, in a state of emergency, is just unacceptable. So if the motion is out of order, I have no problem with it. But it's a great example of how bureaucracy and process may be having a very, very serious impact on the businesses in our community.
So I'm gonna call for the vote. Madam Clerk?
The motion is to extend the deadline for the municipal grants of applications to Friday, May 29th.
On the phone, in favor?
In favor.
Council Bergeron, against? Council Dupell?
I'm in favor because of the businesses, but I would have liked to see it as a new business motion, but I don't wanna vote against, uh, extending the deadline. So in favor.
Understood, Council Dupell. In the room, in favor? Against? Madam Clerk, you got that?
Carried.
Thank you all for your patience. Any other reports from committees of council?
Madam Mayor?
Council Grant?
I just wanted to, uh, uh, as part of the board of management at the Lodge
Yes.
Talk about how, how well that place has been run, and that we've tested all the employees and the residents, and everything came back negative. And I think it's really due to the efficiency of the employees in that place, and how well they started, uh, monitoring everybody who was going in as well as the employees. So, uh, you know, the Lodge, we, we run this, so, uh, I know our committee of management, the team, uh, is really, really proud of what has taken place there. And, uh, I think most of us have given Stephen, uh, kudos for that, the general manager. So I just wanna talk about, uh, very good, positive, uh, relationships there.
Thank you. Who else sits with you on the committee of management? Do either of you want to comment? Mike?
I'd second Council Grant's comments, and I'd also commend the city administration because, um, with redeploying employees to places where they might be needed if they can't do their usual work, I think that helped to, um, sustain the system and get us the track record we've got there. And it's wonderful that the employees, you know, from Parks and Rec, for example, would pick up a broom and sweep a floor at Glenn Storton Lodge. So, good all-round.
Thank you. Council McIntosh?
Not just the Lodge, the entire city. We've had 15 cases since March 12. Not just the Lodge, the entire city. We've had 15 cases since March 12th, or something. Prescott Russell has had probably about 125, SD&amp;G 22. We have no deaths. We're really unique. I understand Kingston also is in the same position, but
Kingston too.
We've been so fortunate here, and it goes back to the screening process, not only in the Lodge, but I think all the facilities that have seniors.
Madam CAO, did you want to add any comment? I know you've worked closely with Mr. Golden throughout this period of time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I would really like to commend the employees at the Glen Storton Lodge. I think that the protocols that they had in place certainly have paid off. I also think that there's truly a commitment amongst the employees to make sure that they're screening themselves, and they're coming to work healthy, absolutely with the residents' health in mind. So I think that, I, I would echo those comments. As far as the city overall, yes, I think we have been fortunate. I do think very early on, there was a lot more awareness in our community, maybe partially because of the passengers from one of the cruise ships that stayed at the Nav Center. But I think between communication, our first responders, Dr. Paul, I also would like to recognize the mayor with much communication, Emma Meldrum, also assisting us with getting stuff out in the media, on the website, looking at signage. I think we tried to do as much as we could to try and promote physical distancing, social distancing. So I'm hoping that that has paid off for, certainly for our community and our, our long-term care residents. So thank you.
No, thank you for those comments. Glen Storton Lodge has been priority from day one. So thank you, Counselor Grant, for bringing that up and allowing us to properly thank all of the staff at Glen Storton Lodge. Madam Clerk?
So Madam Mayor, we skipped over a new business that was at the bottom of the page just before the bylaws.
Yes.
If we could do that now?
Go ahead.
Are there any new business motions?
Counselor McIntosh?
I have one. I have one. Just to preface it, this is, these have certainly been extraordinary times. Our lives have been turned upside down. You know, here we are, meeting in the complex, away from home. We've become orphans. You know, I, I've watched the leadership of both federally and provincially, and I am amazed and marvel how everybody's come together, unlike south of the border. You know, good teams, professional teams are built from the top to the bottom. And I think we've been fortunate here to have a team that's well-built from the top to the bottom. And with that, I'd like to present this motion that council gives CAO, Maureen Adams, and her senior management team a vote of confidence for their leadership and dedication during COVID-19 crisis.
Is there a seconded for that motion? Counselor Elaine McDonald? Any further discussion? Comments? You said it all. What about on the phone? Counselor Dupell and Counselor Bergeron?
Yes. Sorry, can you reread the new business motion?
Sure. Counselor McIntosh?
Second take. That council give CAO, Maureen Adams, and her senior management team a vote of confidence for their leadership and dedication during the COVID-19 crisis.
And it was seconded by Counselor Elaine McDonald. Counselor Dupell?
I just think it's great, as Ms. Adams has said. I think it goes right across the board to all our employees across the city. But certainly, I have been very pleased to see the leadership from Ms. Adams, from yourself, Madam Mayor. The communication has all been wonderful, and I fully support the motion. And would like if the mover, if the mover of the motion wouldn't be offended if we include all employees of the corporation of the city, because it certainly has been a team effort all the way around.
Counselor McIntosh?
Not at all. Thank you, Morse.
So that is a friendly amendment, Madam Clerk, and has been accepted. As such, any further discussion?
Yes.
Oh, Counselor Bergeron?
I just, I just don't understand why we would make this motion. I'm happy to support it. It just seems, you know, I, I think the CAO, I think you, Madam Mayor, I think Dr. Paul, have all done a great job. I just, I don't really understand why this would be a new business motion. I will support it. Hello?
Madam Clerk? As a new business motion, this is appropriate?
Yes, it is, Madam Mayor.
I will wholeheartedly support this motion, and I don't want to start tripping up on all kinds of particular rules that are going to prevent us from having appropriate conversation during a pandemic. And during a pandemic, it's a good idea to react quickly, to, to, to make sure that vulnerable people are being cared for, that small businesses are being cared for, and also that city leadership is also being cared for and recognized publicly. This is a pandemic, and this kind of conversation is perfectly appropriate. So we thank you, Madam CAO, and the senior management team, and all the City of Cornwall employees. Thank you. I'm going to call for a vote. Counselor Grant, did you want to add any comment?
I, I think that we should recognize the unions as well, because I
Of course.
I don't know if we're going from one area to the other. And my understanding is, there's been very little, labor relations have been very good. So I think the unions have a part to play in that as well.
Of course.
And so I, I think they should be acknowledged as well.
From day one, union leadership has worked in partnership, recognizing the emergency situation, and recognizing that everybody had to come to the table to do good for residents. All in favor of this motion? Against?
In favor.
In favor.
Thank you. Carried. Madam Clerk?
We have one notice of motion, limit on new business motions. Whereas currently, there is no limit on the number of notices of motion and new business motions for submitting at a regular council meeting by a counselor and no deadline. Therefore, be it resolved that each counselor be limited to a maximum of two notices of motion and new business motions combined, presented at a regular council meeting. Therefore, be it further resolved that each notice of motion and new business motion shall have a seconded prior to submitting it to the clerk. Therefore, be it further resolved that notices of motion and new business motions shall be delivered to the clerk no later than 12 noon on the Tuesday preceding the date of the intended regular scheduled council meeting, so that it may be included as part of the agenda package, and so that proper notice can be given to the public.
The seconded is?
It is moved by counselors Claude McIntosh and Sid Gardner.
Thank you. So that will be debated at the next council meeting?
That is correct.
Thank you. Next item?
The pending business listed, listing for May 25th is being presented to council to be received.
Moved by Counselor Bennett, seconded by Counselor McDonald. All in favor? Oh, Counselor Bennett?
Yes. Sorry, Madam Mayor. I just have a question about, only because there's, there's a line of one here that has a to-be-determined date on it, but it may be very relevant to what we're going through with our downtown La Vilage areas, which is the placemaking, which was kind of an idea that was designed to get people into our downtown, our La Vilage areas. I would think that the BIAs would probably be interested in this as well. So I know you have a lot on your plate, and I know you're, you're doing a lot of things, but I just want to make sure that this is an idea that might help us in attracting people back to our downtowns when things started to loosen up a little bit. And I just didn't want it to get lost in the new business listing because of everything else that we're dealing with, which is a lot. But I think this is something that would stand out, that may be of a big help to both those areas.
I'll just turn to Madam CAO for a comment, or, or Mr. Bualow. I'll leave it to you, Madam CAO.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Maybe I'll put in a couple of comments, and, and Mr. Bualow could comment. So we have moved this list around in dates quite a bit, trying to, I think, try and prioritize items with respect to things that need to kind of get going sooner, and also understanding council's priorities. With respect to that item, I believe that prior to the pandemic, following that presentation at council, I believe that there have been some discussions, and administration has been looking at opportunities for that. I do think that there's an opportunity for a report to come back to council relatively soon, but I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Bualow to see if he wanted to add any comments.
So Mr. Bualow, just to recap, we were looking at the unfinished business list, and Counselor Bennett brought up the placemaking item, and maybe asking about whether that could inform some of the work that's being done now for downtown.
So through you, Madam Mayor, yeah, the placemaking, I believe, is very much in line with what we're talking about today, especially with respect to the pedestrian space that we have in the downtown and making better use of it. I think the, the request that came to us was looking at things like activity within parking spaces, activity perhaps on pedestrian surfaces within the courtyards. And that, and I really think that that's one of the things that we're fortunate to have in the downtown. Not only do we have what we have in the, in the right-of-way, but we also, in fact, also in each of the blocks, have courtyard space that I think is very useful. So I recall as well, there was a conversation in the placemaking request, which was to look at our intersections and what we may be able to do in that respect. So this is really a sort of a concerted effort between infrastructure as well as our, our area, to look at how we can make better use of, of the space that we have. We have a unique downtown, and I think we can, you know, as, as I said in the, in the report, we can do a better job of trying to get people to realize that they can make better use of the outdoor space. We're in a, an unusual time right now where, you know, if you have 1,000 square feet, and really, quite honestly, if you have, if you have 1,000 square feet, you probably only have about three, four, five, 100 square feet of net space. And that is, you know, you take all the shelving away. So a lot of the retailers downtown, I think, as much as we think that restaurants want to make use of this space, I think retail is going to not have enough space. So I think it's also the retail that needs to look at opportunities in the outdoors. We're starting to get some, some inquiries for that. But I, I, I do want the businesses out there to know that we're happy to work with them. You know, and if it's the $370 application fee, you know, we'll, we'll bring a report to council to say that apparently that's an obstacle. And if it's a little bit more assistance with how to get through the application and all of that, we're happy to do that. I would like to, I was involved with in '91 with the creation of, of how that happened, together, of course. I was a young planner back in the day. But we had expectations that people would make very good use of that space. I would say that, you know, if, again, if you look at the report, it's unfortunate in some cases that the nature of the use that is adjacent to open space, it doesn't match always. And it's, you can't figure that out when you're trying to design a road. Imagine what may occur next to a larger bump out. So anyway, so I just, in conclusion, I think we're happy to bring more information about placemaking, both from our department as, as well as Municipal Works and, and Infrastructure. We're having the conversation now, in the reports that we're bringing to you, exactly on that subject.
Perfect. Thank you. All in favor? On the phone?
In favor.
In favor.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
We have our confirming bylaw looking for a motion, Madam Mayor.
Moved by Counselor Bennett, seconded by Counselor Gardner. On the phone, all in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In the room, all in favor? Carried.
Adjournment. So before we adjourn, I'd just like to do a little recap. The CAO and myself will discuss an economic recovery task force and move forward with some terms of reference, and discussion around who will want to be around that table. So stay tuned on that. And I'd like to thank the clerk and CAO, and Mr. LaValle, I'm told, did some incredible technical work setting up all of this intense physical distancing space. We are grateful for all of the work, and we know that there's a lot of work that went into this setup. It was also submitted to Dr. Paul Romiliotis, and he reviewed the pictures and the setup, and formally indicated to myself and Ms. Adams that this meets the physical distancing rules and all of the regulations. As you know, I've communicated with all of you, because I need your feedback on video conferencing, so we're going to continue to investigate that. We may have committee meetings through, using that service. So that's something that we're going to continue. So it's an ongoing conversation that's not put to bed, that continues. And I am seeking consensus on that issue, so that we can come to a place where all, all of us are comfortable with the way that we proceed around council meetings and any and all other meetings during this pandemic and beyond. Motion to adjourn. Counselor Ebert and Counselor Grant, all in favor? Carried on the phone?
In favor.
In favor.
Thank you to all of you. Take care.